Good evening and welcome to the September 23, 2020, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. With me are Alfred Doyle, Michael Zulus, Katie Conlon, Richard Wells, our Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy, and our Health Director Caroline Consella. If people could join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance before we start. I pledge allegiance.
The flag.
The flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty. Justice. For all.
Thank you. And our first item is public comment. I will just go over the directions first, just in case. For those on the phone, you can press *9 to raise your hand and press *6 to toggle on and off your mute. And if you are on Zoom and not on your phone, you can raise your hand and then you can be recognized. For those who are using phone numbers and your name isn't available, I will use the last three digits of your telephone number and then you can tell us your name and address. Does anyone wish to speak at public comments? No, I don't see any takers here. Okay. Thank you. We will move on. Before we begin, I just would like to note that we'll be moving some items around in the agenda. I'd like to note in particular, Item 7, the Animal Shelter Owner's Project Manager. Item 12, Discussion of the Adoption of the Town Website as the Primary Posting Site for Meetings. And Item 13, the Milton Yacht Club. Will be moved towards the end of the meeting so that Town Council Kevin Freitag can join us at that time. And first, we are going to have a discussion with Caroline Consella, our Director of Public Health, and an update about COVID-19 and some other discussions. Welcome Caroline. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Madam Chair Collins, and thank you Select Board for having me tonight. I just wanted to give you a little update about what's been going on in the Health Department. We've been extremely busy over the past month as school has started and we are seeing about zero to three cases probably in the last three weeks. Today, we had three cases, but we're seeing zero to three cases. We're up to about 371 cases overall since March 1st. What's been taking a lot of time is after cases identified, contacting all the close contacts. So we had one case today that had 13 close contacts. So it's been a lot, a lot of work. It's very time consuming. So getting one case and then following up with all the close contacts and quarantining those people. So that's kept us very busy. We're, I'm still posting on the town website our numbers every day so everyone can look at that to see where we're at. What we're seeing now is some young adults and children, a couple of cases of those. And I expect to see that as, as school has returned. Curry College, Milton Academy, they're both testing with the Broad Institute weekly. So we will see some increases. They'll catch some positives. And a couple of the positives that they have gotten have been asymptomatic. So that's great news that they're saying that there's no symptoms, but they're catching that they're positive. And what can also happen is you can be positive for three months. So you could have contracted COVID-19 a month or two ago and you may still be positive when they're testing you. And that doesn't mean you're spreading it, but you can still have a little bit of RNA or DNA in there and so you could still be spreading, not spreading it, but still have that positive test. So we saw a little bit of uptick as three cases today and we're watching, we have a community level map that's put out by the state and every Wednesday they update that map and it's all color coded. Actually, I was just checking just tonight to see what our, what our color is because it has been green, which is great. Green means less than four cases per 100,000, but they haven't updated it yet. So a couple of weeks ago, we went to yellow. We did see a little uptick, but now, last week it was green, so I'm waiting for the, for the color code and that's the state of Massachusetts. That comes out every Wednesday. So we may see that in the next couple of weeks as the kids have come back to school, that we have a little bump up in the cases. And, and one case, as I said before, you know, can spiral a little bit and we can have a little cluster happening. So we're, I'm keeping a close eye on the schools. I've been in contact with, as I said, Curry Milton Academy with the school nurse at the high school and working closely to see if there's anything going on and how we can follow up with positive cases and quarantining. So we've been very busy in that regard. And then today, we had our first flu clinic at Fuller Village and that went very well. We had 60 residents come through and some staff and we split it, it was two hours instead of the one hour that we usually have. So people weren't crowding. We had a lot of space between each person that we're going to give them the vaccine to and we gave them all the paperwork before, so people weren't filling out all the paperwork. So they had that all, all ahead of time. So it went really smoothly and we're going to do that again when we have our town, townwide flu clinic. And we're just at that today. It's going to be Thursday, October 22nd. It's going to be at the Council on Aging. And we're going to put some, some news on our website. We just decided that today and I spoke to Christine Stanton, Director Christine Stanton, to confirm that. And we're also going to set up some tents at the Council on Aging. So people will have some of their paperwork ahead of time too, because we're going to put that online within the next couple of weeks. We're going to put that online. So don't expect it right away because I have to fill in our lot numbers and stuff, but we'll get that up there. So people will not take a lot of time sitting down and filling out the paperwork. They'll have the paperwork ahead of time and then they can come in and social distance and have their vaccine given. So that'll speed up the process and, and I know that the nurses at the schools will help me. They're always very helpful and volunteers. So we'll have a good, a good force giving the vaccine. So I expect that to be turning out well. And so that's coming a bit in October. And also, we did a public service announcement this week. We have an intern and he speaks Haitian Creole, Lou. And we were down with Michael Lynch down at the MATV and he did a PSA, Public Service Announcement in Haitian Creole about COVID-19 and the importance of wearing masks and what to do with hand washing and stuff like that. And so that was great that he was able to do that and, and send that message out to the Haitian Creole community. So that was great. So we've been extremely busy, a lot of questions coming in to the Health Department, a lot of questions from the schools. And so we're, we're getting there every day. Yep, it's been good.
Thank you so much. Do any members have questions or comments they wish to make? Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for all that you and your staff have done. It's, it's really amazing at this time in our lives. So I wanted to ask if, like is being done in some other time towns, any consideration has been given to having a drive-through component to the flu program so that those people who've completed their paperwork stay in their automobiles, receive their flu shots and exit very, very quickly?
There has been some talk about that possibly with the next vaccine coming out in the spring, but we have talked about that, that, that will be a tremendous amount of work to get that in order, but we have talked about it. But I'm going to see how it goes with the Council on Aging. I think if we spread it out for the four hours instead of the two hours. And if you, if anyone needs a vaccine at their house too, you can always call the Health Department. Supo Rier goes out and gives the flu vaccine or myself to people who are homebound. But I think with the four hours and Brain Trace doing the four hours also, that will be good. And to give the paperwork ahead of time, I don't think they'll be crowding.
Thank you.
And anyone else? Well, thank you. We.
Thank you.
All of your work. Mr. Dennehy?
If, if I could just add one thing, I was on the Lieutenant Governor's COVID briefing yesterday and Caroline, they mentioned the DPH meeting yesterday, which I'm sure you took part in, but they are relaxing some of the restrictions for, for dining and seating. If you want to touch upon those very quickly, or I can elaborate on, on what the Lieutenant Governor announced to us yesterday.
So, so twice a week, we get reports from the state. You might know more, Michael, but the good news is about the dining. We had six people that could be sat at one table and now 10 people can sit at a table. So that's one change that they're going to start doing. That's on Monday. You might, you might know more things.
There were two other, that, that's the main one. There were two other, there were two other small details. You can, you can now sit at the bar, right? And there will be Plexiglas place, Plexiglas stanchions in place, but you have to be dining. So if you've been in one of the restaurants in town, you can't get near the bar. Now, the governor has relaxed that a bit, obviously with understanding that social distancing still needs to take place, but I'm sure our restaurants are making accommodations for that as well, which will take place Monday. And then there was a couple, one other one that caught my eye. The beverage stations at local stores can be reopened on Monday as well?
Yes. And the menu, the menus also. So before they had to throw away the menus or you had to take a picture of it, you can have a menu now. It's a plastic menu that they can actually clean off afterwards. But you're right about the beverages. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you Caroline.
Thank you.
Well, one of the other things that we, we have coming up that COVID figures into is Halloween and we, we've started checking into, Mr. Dennehy has started checking into what other towns are doing. And I think we've all probably been doing reading and research and I realized that DPH hasn't, hasn't come out with guidance yet, even though the CDC has some, but, but wondered if you, you had any thoughts on that for the board to get us started in thinking about this?
Though I saw the CDC guidance that came out, low, medium, and higher risk activities surrounding Halloween and the holidays coming up. And you're right, the state has not given any guidance right now. And we'll just, you know, it's five weeks away. We'll have to kind of see what's happening in Milton and where the numbers are going. And, and people will have to, you know, make some decisions about, you know, if they want to stay home and celebrate at their homes, if they feel like they don't want to expose themselves walking around with the kids for Halloween. That's more of a high risk than just having a little party at your own house by yourself. So we'll just have to see in the next, you know, couple of weeks and see if the state puts out any more guidance, you know? So we're just going to have to see and what people feel comfortable doing, you know? Some people would say, I'm not going to go trick or treating with my children because it's too high risk. Yeah.
Right. And then we have to think about the people who are actually would be giving out candy as well and.
They'll be shutting off their light. And they won't even, yeah, they won't, they will shut off the light and not give out the candy if they feel that they don't want to expose themselves giving out the candy. Yeah.
Right, absolutely. Mr. Doyle?
Just wanted to mention, we might think of those precincts that are visited on Halloween by people from nearby communities.
Does anyone have any, any questions or comments on that? Okay.
Just thank you Caroline. Thank all your staff. You've done a great job. As is duty pay.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, my staff is great. We've been really working hard. It's great.
Went on vacation.
I won't be able to go for a while.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We, we very much appreciate your having joined us and, and we hope you have a good evening and maybe a little rest.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks Caroline.
Thank you. Bye everyone.
So the, the other item we have under COVID is that there was an extension of, of the ability to amend the Common Fiddler's License so that we could extend the period for temporary outdoor seating. Right now, it's still November 1st, but the governor said that we could choose to expand it to December 31st if we so choose. So if the board is interested in considering that, then our business licensing specialist, Jen McCullough, can reach out to businesses. We've only had one business inquire so far about that, but she can reach out to some of the other restaurants and also the Building Department, the Fire Department, the DPW to see if there are any concerns about expanding that because we could be getting into snow season and if there are heaters involved, then that's another concern. So if the board would like to consider, at least consider it, we can have her do that work. We do have a little time. Does anyone have a sense for whether they, they'd like us to look into this?
I think we should, Madam Chair. I think just keep all doors open.
Okay. Thank you. I.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay. It's. We all agree. Excellent. Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll get Bonifera on that and we appreciate her, her doing that, this research for us. Okay. Let's see. Okay. So the next is, do we have Mr. Mulcahy with us this evening to talk about Mike's 5K Crush? He was supposed to join us, but I didn't see him earlier. Let me see.
Could that possibly be Mr. Mulcahy with the 046 number in the attendees?
Just wondering. Mr. Mulcahy, is that you at 046 phone number?
2046 is, 2046 is your veterans agent.
Oh, hello Kevin. Well, you're next, so, so stay.
Okay. Standing by.
Madam Chair, I can speak to this if you'd like.
Great.
Sure. So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Mulcahy, brother of Mike Mulcahy, RIP, reached out to the town. This year, their wildly successful 5K to crush substance abuse is going to be done virtually. He just wanted to make sure that everyone in the town would be holding this date again. It's going to be virtual this year. They're letting people do the 5K anytime between October 17th and October 24th. We'll be posting all the registration information on the town's website tomorrow and on our social media outlets, but for those that are tuned in tonight, you can register at And Mr. Mulcahy is very excited and would have highlighted this this evening that they've actually launched their own website, which is mikesfivek.org. So it's M-I-K-E-S-F-I-V-E-K.org. He appreciates all the generous support and camaraderie that has come around with this wonderful event that they've sponsored in their brother's memory, son's memory, and just wanted to pass that along to everyone. Again, we'll be posting it on the town's website and we could probably get Mr. Mulcahy in on the 7th for a refresher to remind everyone 10 days before the virtual race can take place.
Thank you. Yes, it's a, it's a wonderful website and it includes tributes to those who, the race was dedicated to each year. So it's well worth looking at. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy.
Yeah. And if Caroline was on, still on the line, she would reiterate the amount of money that they've given back to the town, whether it's to the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Last year, they made a donation to the Teen Center at the First Congregational Church. So they are truly giving back to the town. So we really appreciate that. But maybe we can get Mr. Mulcahy in on October 7th.
Okay. That would be, that would be great. Okay. So we're on to item number six. That's Operation Care Pack Supply Drive. And we have our veterans agent, Mr. Kevin Cook, joining us to, to give us some information about this. Hello Kevin, thank you for joining us.
Hi Kevin.
You can unmute at any time.
Thank you. Oh, there we go. Okay. Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
Oh no.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Wonderful. How are you?
Well, we're gearing up for, you know, a number of different things we want to do for the town. And the first tonight, of course, is Operation Care Packs. We're going to supply two groups of troops over in Afghanistan with care packages from our communities. We kicked it off today in Randolph, at the Randolph Intergenerational Center outside, of course, drive-through, COVID safe, you know, all the different good things. And we were very successful. Somewhere around, I would say 15, 16 cases worth of different items were collected today and we had a very generous donation of $220 for postage. So what we're doing is we've been given the mailing addresses of two units over there comprised of about 80 male soldiers and about 20 female soldiers who are going to be in Afghanistan through the holidays into February 2021. And we want to make sure they get some of the support that we can give them. You know, mail means a lot to the troops. You know, you could be having a worst day over there and, you know, you get, someone tells you you got a box, you know, in the mail and, you know, it's just, it's just a great thing. It gives you a lot of support when you're having tough days.
That's wonderful. Thank you. And, and how can people find out about this and, and help out?
Well, I posted some general information out on, on Facebook. It's on the Milton Neighbors. I can also make sure it gets, it's on my own Facebook page. I can make sure it gets over to the town. Mike can put it on the, the town website. And basically what we're doing is we're collecting items the troops will look for over there, food items. Everything has to be sealed. Everything has to be, you know, new condition, but, you know, sending along different things, snacks, pop tarts, things like that, drink mix, you know, toiletry items and even simple things like, you know, decks of cards and pens and notepads. You know, those are the things that, that you need over there. I was talking to someone from the Milton Junior Women's Club today about support for this. And, you know, post-it notes, you know? That's got to be huge over there because, you know, they, they need them. And I'm sure that's something that's in short supply over there. So, you know, something simple like that will make a big difference for them. So we're going to collect the items. We're going to box them and send them out. You know, normally, we would have a lot of people together, you know, we'd make this a big operation if we could. We'd have the use of the COA there and stuff. But, you know, unfortunately, we're not in normal times. So what I'm doing is organizing collection days and then offsite unboxing and, and getting the items to the post office. And by doing so, making sure that, you know, we, we minimize the amount of interaction with anything that's, you know, going to go into a box that's going to be shipped overseas.
What are our collection dates in Milton?
Okay. So right now, next Wednesday, September 30th, from 10 to 12. And what we're going to do, Madam Chair, is we're going to build this up. So each month, we're going to have another set of collection dates at the end of the month. So we'll do it once a month in September. We'll do it once a month in October. And then the, the shipment, I'm hoping will be the big, the biggest shipment we can send at that point will be the one for the holidays. And we'll send it out mid-November so they get it in time, you know? And by then, hopefully, a couple of people have sent cards and letters and then you can send them a note if you want. Put your email address in there. Hey, you know, we're a family in Milton. We'd like to help. Is there anything you need for the holidays or something like that? And, you know, they'll send them back and forth. They'll tell you what, you know, maybe they tell you something we haven't already mentioned. And, you know, by hoping that these, these deployed troops, you know, make connections with families who want to show them, hey, we're remembering you at this time of year.
Wow. That's wonderful. Thank you Kevin.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, how long does it take packages to get there?
It varies. It depends on what's moving in that general direction. Mail is the lowest priority, unfortunately. You know, the other things people need, especially health, you know, items and stuff like that will get first priority. I've had, you know, when I was there, I had really good experiences and really bad ones. I had once, I ordered something online and it arrived in four days. I was shocked, you know? Came right out of New York, got on a plane and must have landed right there where we were or something. But, you know, most times it's, it's seven to 10 days, but, you know, when you add the holiday volume that's going to be going on, just because people have family there and they're going to send stuff, you know, it could take two to three weeks. So they, they advise to be there for the holiday seasons to make sure it gets out no later than mid-November.
Got it. That makes sense.
So I'll post those, I'll post those dates out there, you know, each month, a couple weeks beforehand, make sure everyone's aware because, you know, there's a lot going on and, you know, people will forget the dates are, are coming up and, you know, that way, send stuff out to the Milton Times. In fact, I did send the information to the Milton Times. So they, they got it. So I'm hoping, you know, and a lot of people still are very good and was reading the weekly paper. So we'll see how it goes today. Like I said, Randolph was a kickoff and it was, it was a great day.
Well, that's wonderful. I think Mr. Dennehy has some question or a comment.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Kevin, thank you for everything, putting this all together and working in both the communities. And I may have missed this, but if, if I didn't, it's going to be collected at the Council on Aging, correct? At 10 Walnut Street from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m.?
Yeah. Yeah. It's drive-through. It's drive-through. We're going to use the parking lot there so people can just pull up, you know, hand off the boxes, say hi. Everything's got, everybody's got a mask on, you know? We, we're going to do this cleanly. And then, you know, we'll just tell, talk to people briefly and then send them on their way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking such good care of our veterans and, and veterans in Randolph and thinking of our troops now. Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin, great work. Do you want to just let everyone know that in addition to supplies, you're also collecting cash for the postage? So can that be dropped off on Wednesday, the 30th at the same drop-off at the COA?
Yes. A good, yeah, you can drop that off or you can mail it to us at the COA too, if you want. Yeah. Each box will cost approximately $19.60 to mail. And that's the flat rate that the US Postal is charging right now. So today, I collected $220. So we're, you know, right there, there's, there's 22 boxes and then they're going to go out the door, you know, or so, or 10 boxes. I'm sorry. My math's terrible. It's late at day. 10 boxes at least will go out the door. You know, so, you know, we'll, we'll see how it goes. But yes, cash for postage is great. If just make a checkout to Town of Milton Veterans, you know, because we have, we have the ability, I guess, you know, to receive money, I would hope. And then, you know, and then we'll, we'll work out the postage. I'll work out all those details, you know, between now and, and next week when I do the collection, I'll make sure everybody's comfortable with how we're going to set it up.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Doyle?
Kevin, thank you for all you're doing. I just wanted to know if people want to drop off checks for the Milton veterans, can they drop them in the drop box by Town Hall too?
Oh, sure. I mean, that's going to get into my mailbox and then it'll get over to my box at the COA. So that's, yeah, perfectly acceptable. That's great. Makes it easy on everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the support we get from people in Milton. It's amazing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells? Yes, Mr. Wells?
Kevin, Richard, many thanks. As you know, it's the father of a Marine Corps vet. It's a very special thing when they get mail, when they get the packages. There aren't many highlight days, as you know, in the Middle East, but when those days happen, they're exceptional. So and especially as we get closer, the holidays are not far away. So thank you for everything. Thank you for taking care of all our vets, from the oldest to the youngest, to those who are serving today overseas, especially in the Middle East and who protect this country each and every day. So thank you for all you do.
No, thank you, Richard. I appreciate your support. I know you've got my back, you know, especially right now, you know, your background as a, as an officer, you know, we're, I think we're unfortunately seeing a lot of tough times all the way around. So I'm glad to have your support, sir.
You have it always.
Well, thank you very much.
Madam?
Yes?
Madam Chair, if I could, I just wanted to bring up a quick note about Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know everyone wants to move along and I don't want to take too much of your time. So Veterans Day is going to kind of probably be like Memorial Day this year. We're going to have to abbreviate it. I have not spoken with anyone at the schools yet because, you know, I felt it was inappropriate for me to to kind of go chase that down yet when they're still trying to get their feet on the deck plates, you know, with with this year. So, you know, I'm going to be reaching out to the schools and see what they want to do and if they have the ability to participate as they have in the past. This year, I've elected to honor our female veterans. I think the female veterans that we have seen have not got the recognition they deserve. You know, we've recognized, though, different groups of veterans through the years now with the ceremonies we hold. And I got to say, I owe a lot to the shipmates I had, especially some of the female Seabees. And it would not be, you know, it's just one of those things I just said, you know, we need to do this this year. So I've got two featured speakers lined up. To start, we have a Navy yeoman who was a recruiter for many years here on the South Shore. Worked at Southwest Naval Air and a colleague of mine, actually, one of my recruiters. So she'd like to speak on behalf of the women in the military, and I thought that would be a great thing. And then a friend of mine named Jim Lasky, Colonel Jim Lasky, and he's a former commander of the Marine League. And he's going to come up and also speak on Veterans Day. So I just wanted to give you that much information. I haven't got much more at this point, but I'm going to start working on it very shortly and then I'll send along some information.
Well, thank you. We look forward to to seeing how the program develops and we really appreciate your your forethought. Memorial Day was a great success because of all the effort and the thought that you put into it. And I'm sure Veterans Day will be equally meaningful.
Well, again, Madam Chair, I want to make sure people understand, no one person can do all of the things I do. I have great colleagues and I have great assistance from our community and from my my fellow veterans. And without those, it's impossible for me to do the job. So I give thanks to everyone who assists because, again, I'm just making sure, like a good conductor, it all arrives on time. And it sounds good, you know, but I really appreciate the support. It's, I tell people all the time, I have the best job in the world.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Cook. And again, we look forward to hearing about the the program as it develops. And and we're here for whatever support you do need.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're moving on to an item, two items, actually, that are somewhat connected. And I see that our DPW Director, Mr. Berkeley, is here to speak with us. So we have some recent Traffic Commission minutes. And so I think there's some developments that Mr. Berkeley would like to speak with us about. And then we have, after that, a lane reduction or a road diet program, sort of a test that that he'll also be speaking with us about. And I I believe our new head engineer may actually be joining us too, but I don't necessarily see him, Chris Trudell. Hillary, do we need to promote Chase?
Yes, I do. I just promoted him.
Okay, thank you. And there's someone with the phone number 539, and I don't know if that is Chris Trudell or not. I'm guessing it is because...
Sorry, no, this is Mike Kelly.
Okay. Oh, hello, Mike. Our, our director of, our chief procurement officer, okay. And I'm not sure this is your item. But anyway, thank you for for coming and speaking with with us, Mr. Berkeley. There were several items in in the Traffic Commission minutes, so I didn't know if you wanted to brief us on all of them or...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And if I may, just briefly, DPW community lost a former employee today, Charlie Bosworth. Bosworth family is certainly one well-known to Milton. So very unexpected news. So just some thoughts for his family and their time right now. Yeah, he was a mechanic with Milton before moving on to a private contractor and a very clever one, from what I'm told. So sad to see that.
Thank you. That is very sad news.
So, yes, so moving on to the Traffic Commission. So we met earlier in the month. And we don't have any recommendations that would require any amendments to the traffic rules, but I just wanted to cover some of the topics we talked about. First one being, we just have a lot of new members. So we welcomed the new fire chief, town engineer, town planner, and then a new resident representative to the bicycle community, Joe Sloan. So a lot of new faces on the Traffic Commission, which is great to see. You know, it's always great to have new insight in that world. So grateful for all of them for joining the team. And so I included the whole minutes for your review. I'm happy to talk about all of them, but I thought they're probably too worth highlighting. The first one being, we got a request from the city of Quincy for a heavy vehicle restriction on Plymouth Avenue, which is a street shared by Quincy and Milton. And so Quincy is basically just looking for Milton's support in establishing this heavy vehicle restriction. So they have an issue with trucks using that as a cut-through street. And they have taken the initiative to do the required engineering studies and counts that are necessary to get that restriction approved by Mass DOT. And they just were looking for us to support that. So the Traffic Commission did discuss and fully support. That is a very residential street and certainly no place for large trucks to be using for commuting purposes. So we sent the letter over in support of that. And then the second item, which I know also ties into the next item on your agenda, if you wanted to get into that or if if there's any questions about the other items on our minutes, I'd be happy to answer those too. But yeah, I think that the Plumeth Act was certainly one to highlight.
Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chase, could you just go over the logistics on it? How, because the city of Quincy has asked the Town of Milton for support on this, that they are actually taking the lead on this? And what what will come back to the town if it's approved by by Mastard?
Sure. So, yeah, so Quincy needs to do traffic counts and basically prove there's a certain volume of heavy vehicles that are using that street. And then they need to establish an alternative route. They submit that to MastDOT for approval. And if it gets approved, it takes the form of signage. So there would be signs at each end of Plymouth Avenue, one being in Quincy and the other in Milton, at Edge Hill Road, that just have a truck restriction on them. And then, you know, vehicles could be stopped and tagged if they were using it for that purpose. So fairly simple and, you know, luckily, on our end, Quincy's willing to do all the work to do this. So we kind of reap that benefit without having to do much other than say that we agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Zulis?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two questions. Chase, there's no concern, I'm trying to think, there's no concern that a proposed alternative route could could be through another street in Milton, is there?
No, so they did provide us with a, an alternative route, and it keeps the vehicles on the main roads in that area. So Bryant Avenue would be the alternative to Plymouth Ave, which is a much more suited road for that heavy traffic. So I think we're okay there. They're not using any other side streets as an alternative.
Right. So if you think about it, remember, Zulis, they're not going to go up Grafton. They're not going to go up Gombe. There's restrictions on those as well. So it kind of forces the heavy traffic onto Bryant Ave, which is, which is made for the heavier trucks. It eliminates Plymouth Ave as a cut-through for these trucks that don't want to either traverse Granite Ave heading north or Bryant Ave heading south.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
So that's my concern to Mrs. Zulis. Follow up to Mrs. Zulis's question is, I'm very concerned about protecting Gombe, which takes the brunt of both north and south every day. And so Chase, you're Quincy's interest then, given if you're referring to Bryant Ave, which is one way, you're referring to southbound traffic only, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, and Gombe does already have the restriction in place.
Okay. I can hear the residents of Gombe's road without even hearing a word, thinking, oh, my God, what's going to happen? So they, as you know, they do bear a heavy brunt there at half for a long time. So I'm okay with it then.
Mr. Zulis, your second?
Yeah, the second, thank you. The second question is, is it, is it useful or helpful for for this board to to send a letter of support for this restriction?
So I think their only ask was that the town supported. They didn't ask for a specific form. So Traffic Commission sent the letter saying it would be supported by the Traffic Commission. If there's need for additional support, if it becomes controversial, that might be a time to go down that road.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we actually moved on to the next one, I wanted to note that that I was glad to see the trial for the Granite Ave loading zone. And because I know people have been asking about having a loading zone that was, that would correct some of the difficulties a little further up near Franklin. And and so is this zone in in response to some of those concerns or did this come out of some other process?
Yeah, so that that zone already exists. This this relates to requests from those businesses there. So the way that that loading zone is signed, there's, there's no restriction after 5:00 p.m. So basically, it's a loading zone up until 5:00 p.m. and then there's no rule for it after that. So businesses asked us if we could take advantage of that window of time between 5:00 and 9:00 and and post some parking, similar to what you have around the corner on Adam Street in front of the Mr. Chan's and Peel Pizza, where you have a short time, 15 minutes, to encourage turnover for those businesses to get their customers that, you know, are frequently showing up a spot. So it's basically just to take advantage of that loading zone that's already there while it's not being used as a loading zone.
Okay. Is there a duration for the trial or?
So we we propose it as a trial only because we're still in the midst of the larger trial in that area for the two-hour standardized parking. So and that coupled with the the deck construction and constantly shifting parking in that area, it just didn't seem like a good time to make a permanent change. So it's a good opportunity to try it out and make sure it has the effect that they're hoping it does.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have any questions before we move on to, yes, Ms. Conlon?
That discussion reminded me about the two-hour parking that that Chase just referenced. So I don't think it's really on the agenda because this agenda really talks about minutes and it wasn't included in those minutes. But maybe for a future meeting, we could have an update on the request that came in from East Milton, the East Milton Liquor Store regarding the two-hour parking and and also maybe an update on the deck project that could be combined in a future meeting.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Mr. Zulis?
Yeah, I would just add one additional thing for that future meeting, and that is a discussion of the recommendations of the Traffic Mitigation Report that was submitted to our board and to the Traffic Mitigation, I mean, the Traffic Commission last spring. And there's a number of recommendations in there, and some of them have to do with the Traffic Commission. And so maybe we can put that on the agenda for the same time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
Just give, I don't know how close you follow in the daily operation over there, what's going on right now that Mulcahy is involved in. I wouldn't be in, I wouldn't be in a rush right now to discuss any changes in parking, given that the sidewalks in Granite Ave are completely ripped up from Bruges all the way to Adam Street right now. Is it no parking, Chase, at all? It's, it's very limited. Is it 15-minute? It's very, if there's any parking at all in Granite Ave, it might, we might want to wait till they get through this aspect of the project before we start addressing that. That they're right in the middle of this part of the project right now because that Granite Ave completely ripped up.
Yeah, I mean, that would be okay with me. I wasn't requesting a specific date or anything. I just wanted to know that the Traffic Commission has that on its radar because we did ask that it be reconsidered in light of the East Milton Wine and Spirit Store request. And so I, no specific timing. I think whenever it makes sense to put it back on. I just want to know that the commission is looking at it.
I'm okay with that. Just to, just to let the members know if they're not following this. I'm there every day. So if you're not following this, it's, as you know, Chase, like, you're right in the heart of this right now. Like, they've got this whole thing ripped up from A to Z.
Right. And you're certainly going to see phases of construction where they may leave it that they need to return. So it is going to bounce around quite a bit.
Thank you. All right. I think we might be ready to move on to Brook Road.
Okay, so so the Brook Road, Road Diet, as it's called in the minutes, is a project. The concept has been around some time, definitely predating me. But an opportunity came up to implement this through the Mast dot Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. So a little background. So there's an organization called the Boston Foundation who funded transportation consultant firms to help cities and towns implement the application to go after funds available through the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. So we were able to take advantage of that free consultant work. And when we got into that, looking at the town and where that grant may have opportunity to be applied to, Brook Road corridor between Central Ave and Thatcher Street, which encompasses the Pierce Middle School, Kelly Field, and St. Mary's School, really popped off the page for a way to take advantage of a really wide road and increase pedestrian usage and the space that pedestrians have. And that's the whole crux behind the grant is they want to open up space for people to be able to spread out in the midst of the pandemic. So this was also a project that was flagged very high, if not the highest, when we went through the complete streets process and a lot of community outreach about being more pedestrian-friendly in that area. So so the idea behind this application is that this this needs to be implemented very quickly by October, basically. So Milton was awarded funds and the amount of $57,000, which would cover really only just pavement markings and some signage. So it was intended that this would be a trial or a temporary project to determine if it should be implemented permanently. And and the idea is that since Brook Road is so wide, in between intersections where the signals are, you're, you're able to, the volumes of Brook Road are such that you're able to merge two lanes into one in between intersections and then go back to two lanes at the traffic lights. So you need that stacking capacity at the lights. But once vehicles pass through an intersection... But once vehicles pass through an intersection beyond traffic lights and start to move, um one lane is sufficient to carry that volume. And by going down to one lane in between intersections, it allows us to widen the other uses of that road, which would be um establishing some parking and a school drop-off zone for both schools and also um dedicated bike lanes. And so um basically, between traffic lights along Brook Road, we would reduce the road to one lane and expand a bike lane, a parking lane, um and some uh buffer zone in between them. So um thi- this uh is something that we're actually teed up to to move on, probably starting next week. It it's something that got a lot of community support. One uh thing we're going to watch very carefully uh being that Brook Road is a heavily used commuter road in Route 28. Um we want to make sure that uh any type of restriction doesn't cause an effect into the neighborhood um beside on on either side of it. So anytime you have a pitch point, um you know, the natural instinct is to go around it. And so um the numbers and the theory tells us that that shouldn't be necessary, but we all understand how the practical world works. So we will be monitoring pre and post conditions. We're actually required to submit a report to Mast dot about that, um what the effects of the the project are. Uh so we are aware of that potential. Uh and being in the trial, this is a great opportunity to use the state's grant money to to see if this will work. And then um if it is successful, we can plan it as a capital project and and do it in a more permanent form. But right now, uh just being paint and signage, it it's very quick to implement it, and um we will be able to um see the effects right away or should be able to.
Thank you. Uh are there any questions or comments from members? Ms. Conlon?
Uh, thank you, Chase, for that description. I grew up right in that neighborhood and spent probably half of my life living between Thatcher and Central, both on Brook Road and on a side street, right off of Brook Road, and I'm just up the street from it right now. So um it's a very heavily traveled road. The speeds can be excessive. Going down to one lane in both directions, um you know, I do worry a little bit about backups, but knowing the hazardous conditions that sometimes exist, especially right around both schools, Pierce and St. Mary's, I think it's a worthwhile experiment. So I I I support it. Um but I do wonder if it's going to create backups. And I'm glad you're going to be monitoring the impacts that it might have in neighborhood traffic, which might be more inclined to be to put traffic on to Thatcher Street than some of the streets on the other side of Brook Road because it's such a maze to go through the Columbines. You wouldn't really save any time trying to cut off the area between Central and Thatcher. Um so I I I support it. I think it's probably worth looking at. But one of the side effects might be a backup, which which could back up onto 28 as well, which is the street that I currently live on. So um there's a lot of volume and a lot of speed on 28 as well, and it will be interesting to see how this experiment goes. How how long would this? How long would this trial basis last?
So that's really up to us to determine. When these types of road diets are implemented, there's usually a a couple of weeks of a learning curve for for drivers. So um if any of you travel just north of this into Boston, Cummins Highway was just outfitted with a very similar concept where they went down to one lane, uh created a parking lane in the right lane and a bike lane inside that. Um they did it with a little more physical presence and um Jersey Barrier-type structures. Uh but I certainly watching that, it it took a couple of weeks for people to get used to it. And then it's really us up to us to determine um how long to run it for. You know, when we run into winter months and you start to talk about snow cover and potential snowbanks, um you know, that may have an impact. So um you know, I would assume it would be a couple of months at at a minimum. Uh we have a report due by the end of the year to Mast dot, so we'll have a good good idea by year end of of which direction this should head in.
And then just as a follow-up, would there be some enforcement during the, at least during the initial four weeks to uh some increased law enforcement there, police to make sure that traffic is flowing the way it should and to keep an eye on it and and find out where we may need to make some changes?
Absolutely. Yeah. Lieutenant Alba and Chief King um were part of the discussion and are fully on board with with helping us implement this.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. You're muted.
Thank you for telling me. Um uh Chase, is there a plan to communicate this to the residents and particularly to the neighborhoods in the area? Because when we do this, there's you, there's going to be a lot of questions. So if we could, if we could communicate this um uh beforehand, that would, I think, be helpful.
I I hundred percent agree. Yes. So the the news is out about the grant. Um it's been put out in social media that the town's received the money for the project. Uh we plan to put in uh VMS boards notifying drivers of a change in traffic pattern ahead of time. And um and certainly, you know, as we get closer to the actual implementation, put it up on all of our venues uh to get the word out. Um but honestly, you really need people to drive through it to to understand it.
Yeah, I mean, if we could put something out about the the that show the schematics, uh I don't know if on the website or on social media but but the show the schematics that we have in our packet here, that might help people understand what's going to be done.
Agreed. Yeah. So right now, we're developing a more uh detailed schematic that we need to be able to give the contractor uh that paints the lines. So we'll be able to post those online so people can get a good look at it.
And and then for the affected neighborhoods, um I don't know if there's a way to try to contact them. I don't know if it it might be, I don't know if it's within uh the budget to try to leaflet it or try to get some kind of notice to the to the neighborhoods in the area uh that are going to be more directly affected.
Yeah, and I imagine there's some neighborhood groups that too we could reach out to to try to help with that message.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
The good thing, Chase, is that being very knowledgeable in this for me is that if you have a AM commute, it's the greater pressure on that road. It's more more in the morning than it is in the afternoon. Um the good thing to help to miss both Mr. Zulus' and Katie's point of view, A, from an enforcement point of view, you don't want to be too stringent because you want to see how it works without the enforcement. That's going to show you the true effect of it, how it how it works without interruptions. And B is, as you know, you've got some restrictions on Fairfax, you know, some of the streets that on the northbound commute that people would use to cut through to avoid it. So this is kind of make them function through it. I think that's a good thing. So um I support this. I think this is this is a long time coming. I think I'm sure St. Mary's of the Hills definitely supports it. I'm sure Pierce would as well. Because they're rarely on that pressure. It's not so much by Pierce. It's when you get beyond Marilyn Road, those streets there, Fairfax, St. Mary's, up to Thatcher, around Blue Hills Parkway. That's where the greater pressure comes.
Right. I would just add, you know, St. Mary's is on the northbound side, and school drop-off occurs during peak commuter traffic. It doesn't happen.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Doesn't happen to pick up. So that's really the, you know, the the most challenging portion of this. Because of that, you know, it doubles up on you.
Mr. Dennehy, you had one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wells. If I could just add, um, for people that aren't familiar with this, so the Lincoln Street Project, which um received nearly $400,000, uh that was part of the WikiMap um initiative uh as a part of the Complete Streets policy. Additionally, the Hawk Signal that was uh installed on Reed's Dale Road at the hospital. Um so we're seeing a a lot of input from the constituency through WikiMap. We saw it in the Traffic Mitigation WikiMap as well. So it's nice to see that that Mast dot is funding these projects. Uh we got uh, you know, this this will be nearly half a million dollars to work on um that corridor there where where we see a lot of students and obviously the ball field is there. So um I think it's, I think it's worth mentioning that that Mast dot has uh adopted the policy that this board adopted in 2018. And and they're actually funding some of these projects that 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 are coming through the system. So um that that corridor uh obviously inundated in in both commutes uh and when school is in session and and kids are playing sports at at Kelly Field. Um it just exacerbates the problem. So I I just wanted to acknowledge those three projects in that corridor.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Dennehy.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
So don't forget, too, that in it's 16 and 17 DCF put a half a million dollars into Blue Hills Parkway between Brook Road, where it connects in the at Brook and the Parkway, all the way down through Elliot Street and on the other side, traveling southbound 138 into Truman Highway, south towards High Park. So this will only help funnel what what the corrections that they've already put up and the improvements they've already put in place. This is just like one additional step to the things that Mr. Dennehy just touched on.
Right. I I would I would say there's as much construction, roadway construction and and uh tax dollars being spent on Blue Hill Ave. Most recently, uh they did that whole reconstruction effort, uh Blue Hills Parkway that you talked about where DeRoma and uh them came out and did sidewalks, et cetera. And and now this this road diet here to to take a look at it. Obviously, the the larger project would be a lot more expensive, Chase. I think it was priced at about uh $900,000 if they were, you know, to to redo curvings and bump out sidewalks. But this is strictly paint and signage and um, you know, as as Chase said, uh the Cummings Highway um road diet is working well in Boston, um but there was a learning curve. So we'll we'll work through that as a town to try to uh educate people and and obviously uh some enforcement will have to come with that.
I think. Thank you. And Ms. Conlon?
Has St. Mary's School been notified in Pierce Middle School? Are they aware of this?
Uh Pierce Middle School is. Um I was waiting for this meeting here tonight before we 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 brought it to to St. Mary's. Um I I I would assume they will welcome it. I believe they were one of the submitters for uh for for the WikiMap back in 2017 and 18.
Yeah, I think they would. I I know we've had conversations with them about the drop-off and the the um the signage and the the traffic enforcement there at the drop-off. To Mike Zulus's point, I think maybe even putting it out too through the, just an email blast through the town, email distribution with some kind of a graphic. There are some materials. We have some diagrams and photos. Some of that might be helpful to put out so that the, not only the the neighbors who, the residents who live in that immediate area, but also residents who travel through that part of town every day um will be aware of it as well, reach a little bit of a broader audience.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question or a comment? No. Mr. Berkeley, thank you so much for joining us and and walking us through through this and uh and entertaining our our questions. We really look forward to to seeing the the public outreach and also hearing how it's going, how I'm sure that we'll we'll enjoy having an update at some point. Uh at least I I hope we will, and that it's good news because that it could really be a quite a a good project for that area. So thank you.
That was great. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So item 10, airplane update. Um this is a reminder that on September 29th at 7:00, there will be um a Zoom meeting on um two particular uh things regarding airplanes. And that information uh isn't isn't up on on the the web yet as far as uh the the meeting notice, but it it will go up. Um so we are going to be looking uh at Logan Runway for arrivals. So um a review of and the MIT study Arrival Path Dispersion Alternatives. So Tom Doherty, our representative at the Massport Community Advisory Committee, will provide a summary. And then uh the Select Board will have a public comment period on the subject. And then following that, um there will be um basically a description of the FAA process for the environmental assessment uh for them to collect feedback from both municipalities and individuals and anyone else wishing to comment. So that's on the runway for our arrival path, and uh Mr. Doherty will be giving that as well. And then we'll have another opportunity for public comment. So there there will be um uh notice going out and up on the website on this, and it will have links to any of them meeting material that that people would need. So you can all look forward to to seeing that. Uh, Mr. Dennehy?
Sorry, Madam Chair. Um Hillary Wade posted that online this afternoon. So.
She did already. Okay. Thank you.
It it is live. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, and I think uh this this may be a good time in the agenda since generally on airplane issues to give a quick update of the FAA's briefing uh for elected officials on the draft environmental system assessment that that occurred. Was it uh Tuesday? Well, what's today? Wednesday? So it was yesterday and today, right?
Yes, it was. No, it was Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday. So.
I think the Monday one was better. So you should give the briefing.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, I uh I think generally speaking, um we'll hear more about it on the 29th. But uh there were several questions about the environmental assessment from Tom Doherty. Uh there was a uh question and comment um and uh a very extensive comment from Congressman Lynch, uh from Senator Timelty, Representative Driscoll, Katie, who's here, um and um uh Representative Holmes from Mattapan. Um trying to think of who else commented. And I and you know, my my view uh is uh generally speaking, that the responses from the FAA Administrator Ms. Delacentro were woefully inadequate um in 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 terms of uh providing feedback for the issues that are faced by this community and by Mattapan and by Dorchester, um by Foral and by Forar for that matter. So um I I guess more to come on that on the on the 29th. But um but uh we did receive some feed, some um feedback and the opportunity to ask some questions. And this community uh was well represented, I think, by Congressman Lynch and our state-elected Senator Timelty, Representative Driscoll and Katie, uh certainly and Tom Doherty. So um uh so but was not well represented. This community was not well represented, I think it's fair to say, by the by the FAA. So.
And by both mics, both mics for Mike Zulus.
No, Katie, you're muted.
Yes, you're muted.
Sorry. I I I was going to add in both Mike Dennehy and Mike Zulus were uh there to represent Milton as well. And I think the only one from, the other one from Boston was uh City Councilor Flynn, who I think is from South Boston.
Right. And actually, Mike, Zulus, Katie, you you both showed up the next day when I was able to make it. So um so so you you did double duty there. Dennehy was there too, actually.
We just wanted to see if they're they're going to be consistent.
And and were they?
It was only a 10-minute.
I know.
Presentation. It was it was very short. There really wasn't much there.
No, no. Um, there wasn't. That was disappointing.
Consistently inadequate.
All right. If there's nothing else, uh we can move on to 11. Um, okay, that's the discussion of the traffic.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we go back to number seven?
Uh, yes, we can. Number seven, um uh oh, I'm sorry. I meant to did I? I I'm sorry. I meant to say that I I moved that. That's um the Animal Shelter's owner, project manager. I I said that in the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I I just, I moved that only because I I consulted with Kevin, and he's coming later. And I didn't know if somebody would have a question for him. But I see Mr. Kelly is here. If we don't need uh Kevin Freitag, then uh we we could absolutely take that right now. Shall we do that?
Well, yeah, Mr. Mr. Kelly can handle that one. Sorry. Sorry for the confusion.
I'm sorry to keep you on for so long, Mr. Kelly. Um uh so let's go to number seven then. That's the um discussion and approval of the Animal Shelter Owners Project Manager Contract. Did everyone have a chance to read through it and? Okay. Um, does anyone have questions or comments on that?
So, Madam Chair, I had a I had a question that I had sent in to Kevin about whether we need any any type of COVID-19 disclaimer uh in the agreement. I I don't know if we've heard back from him. I, I don't know if we've heard back from him and, and maybe Mr. Kelly can, can address that. That's the only thing that is, that is different in awarding the contract in this, in this, this environment.
Well, Mr. Kelly, would you like to walk us through the, the contract and for the benefit of, of residents? And, and let us know about the, the COVID.
Well, I did see that email this afternoon and it didn't even, I didn't, it occurred to me to even put that in, but I think that's probably a pretty good idea. I'm sure Kevin can come up with some language for that.
It feels as if we've seen that in other contracts recently. Is that true?
Yeah, I have seen that in, in some contracts. So that, that's, that's probably an easy fix anyway. But other than that, basically this contract is the OPM, which is the Owner's Project Manager for the new Milton Animal Shelter. And the company that we picked is RND Consultants and they're in Boston. And we have negotiated with them and we are ready to have it signed.
Oh, hello, Mr. Freitag. Do any members have questions or comments in addition to the COVID disclaimer? No. Mr. Zulus, you are muted.
Sorry, sorry.
No, no.
I do have one more in addition to that one, just a question on the deletion of the warranty section. And whether that's, maybe that's covered by the standard of care. But that's the only other question that I had in addition to whether we do want to have some kind of disclaimer condition for COVID-19.
I'm sorry. Sir, what, what was your question about the warranty?
Oh, so Mike, yeah, sorry. And, and page three, the, the warranty was deleted as not applicable, section six.
And, and Mr. Kelly, to let you know, Mr. Freitag has joined us.
Okay, yeah, I think Mike could probably, Kevin could probably explain that better.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. Mr. Zulus, regarding the COVID language. If you take a look at page seven, under paragraph 18, delays force majeure. Need some updated language that includes epidemics. So we think that that language now covers situations like and related to COVID. And then, I know you had another question. I couldn't quite hear it though, but I thought it, it might have related to the warranty issue.
Yeah, Kevin, it was a deletion in section six on page three, the deletion of the, the warranty. And I didn't know if that's covered, you know, if that's taken care of in the standard of care or, or that's, that's why that was deleted.
I can tell you that John Flynn was working on this pretty closely with Mike. And I didn't speak to him about that specific, that specific change. But I suspect that you have it right, that it is covered by at least another portion of the contract, probably the standard of care that you just identified.
I, I also have a question and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the page that it was, it was on. But it says in the contract that records and statements are not public records. Chapter pursuant to chapter four, section seven. And I didn't quite understand that, why. And, and I know it's legal. I just would like to understand it.
Where do you see that in the contract, Madam Chair?
You know, I'll, it's really not a question that would make me not sign this. So I, I, and I don't have, I didn't print it out because it was so long. So, and I did, I see I didn't note the page number as I did with everything else. So it's all right. I'll let that question go. So that's, I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Richard, your hand is up, but I think it's been up, so.
It has, Madam Chair, but I'm going to recuse myself. Obviously, I have a cold foot on the throat.
Okay. Okay. I'll entertain a motion if everyone's ready.
Madam Chair, so I'll move that we approve a contract for the provision of owner's project manager services for the design and construction of a new animal shelter between RND Consultants, Inc. and the town.
Mr. Doyle, did you second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor? Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And Mr. Wells is recused. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will go back to item 11, the Traffic Mitigation, East Milton Working Group. And Mr. Zulus, I will turn this over to you. It came out of the Traffic Mitigation Committee.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So this proposed working group is a recommendation of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. And, and this proposal tries to mirror what was, what was recommended by the committee. In section F, subpart seven, subpart C of the report, the, the Traffic Mitigation Committee suggested a working group of town officials, residents and members of the business communities, business community to evaluate specific strategies for next, next steps in East Milton Square. In an effort to make the, the square more pedestrian friendly, more walkable. And to, to try to improve safety and traffic and, and, and parking. And specifically, the report called out traffic on the Wood Street Extension as a major issue, pedestrian safety and, and parking. So, so in this proposal, basically, and I'm not wedded to it in any sense. But the proposal is to create this working group and to evaluate the steps as recommended by the Traffic Mitigation Committee. To improve automobile and pedestrian traffic in East Milton Square, including the Wood Street Extension, pedestrian safety. Particularly with respect to routes to and from East Milton Square and parking. And the, the recommend, the proposal is to have this working group make recommendations within this, this Select Board year, which, which would be prior to the next election, prior to next April's election. And then, and then the proposed membership, and again, I took it from the Traffic Mitigation Committee. The, the suggestion of town officials, business community and residents. And suggested one, be someone who served on the Traffic Mitigation Committee and who, who would be the chair. Dick Burke, who was on the Traffic Mitigation Committee and is a resident up in that area. I think he would be a very, very good candidate to be the chair. And then the question is, who do we include for town officials and residents and business representatives in the business community? Now, I suggested in this proposal, the chief of police or his or her designate, the town administrator or his or her designate. Two met residents of the, of the town who are also members of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And then two members who would be members also of the Milton Chamber of Commerce. So I'm not wedded to this. This is a, a, a proposal. But I just wanted to start the conversation, so.
Do members have questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
So two points. One, to Mr. Zulus's recommendations on his final recommendation, just because every resident of East Milton isn't in the East Milton Neighborhood Association, so not to exclude him or maybe go 101 if he'd accept that. You know, just a resident of East Milton, one of, of two residents of East Milton, at least one of which is a representative of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And then the second thing is, just because we are in the beginning of what has been waited as, Mr. Doyle can relate as a fellow member of East Milton. When the beginning of a massive project that we're waiting for for so long. One that is well beyond in dollars what we ever thought it would be and, and which Mass DOT is going to fund fully. I just don't want to jam them in what they're doing for us. But that'll be my only concern, those are my only concerns. And just if Mike would accept that, just not to exclude if someone from East Milton wants to be on it. And the fact that they're not in East, and now that they can't keep them, that'd be, other than that, I'm fine with everything else on it.
I, I think that's a good suggestion. I agree with that.
Thank you.
Ms. Conlon, you had raised your hand.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on the membership. And it might make sense if, if we don't vote this tonight, but maybe bring this back to a future agenda. Just generally speaking, my thought is that while residents of the East Milton neighborhood, the, the area around the square have a great interest in the square and in the traffic patterns and, and traffic issues there. You know, so do a lot of other people in town. And so my thought is just similar to the Brook Road discussion. I, I think we should have some notice and some, in that case, it's really a notice issue. But in, in this situation, more maybe participation by, not, not to limit the participation just to residents of East Milton. I think we might want to cast a broader net here. And we certainly want East Milton representation on the committee. But there, there may be someone who's qualified, who has a lot of traffic experience or some other background that might be helpful to this group. Who is over there frequently as a shopper and a restaurant goer and just driving to work, like many of us are, but doesn't live in the area. So I wouldn't want that person to be excluded. And the proposal is the chief of police or his, his designate or the town administrator and, or his designate. And I, I am concerned about the number of committees that exist and that we seem to be increasing a lot of committees. This one is recommended by the mitigation committee. I think there's a good reason for it. But I'm wondering whether we should rethink whether the chief of police and the town administrator need to be members of the committee or whether they can't just work with the committee and the committee could consult them. The way is a little more, the way the town is traditionally approached. I know in recent years, we've, you know, with the town administrators on the WRF Committee, the chief of, and the chief of police and some other employees are on the Traffic Commission. But it, it might make more sense for them to be working with the committee rather than being voting members of the committee. Especially if this committee is going to be reporting to both the Traffic Commission and our board. So I, I think it's a great proposal. I, I would just like to give it a little more, the membership a little bit more thought. But I'm comfortable with the April deadline for the report and the recommendations to be made to us and to the Traffic Commission.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mike, for putting this forward. It certainly has my support. And I thank both Richard and Katie for their comments because they reflect two that I have. Before that, Mike, just a minor wordsmithing recommendation, where it begins, seven members to be appointed by the board's strike office selectmen. And.
That was an old, that was an old form.
It's amazing how things carry forward. On Katie's point, what I had noted was the following, which may address her interest. And that it was a designate of the, I had inverted designate so that it would read a designate of the chief of police and a designate of the town administrator or someone to be appointed by the chief of police to represent them, someone by the town. Whatever the appropriate wording was. I just inverted that. And then with Richard, I agree with his recommendation and would suggest and see what his thoughts are. That one of the people from the East Milton area be from precinct six and one from precinct seven.
I'm okay with that. You want to, so you want to add one person out? Add an additional person? Or you want to, I don't want to exclude EMT because they've done so much work in, in East Milton. I don't want to exclude them.
I'm fine if the MNA has somebody, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. If the MNA has a representative in there from precinct seven, then the second representative would be from precinct six. Or vice versa. How's that sound to you?
I, I can live with that. That, that covers both. And to Katie's point, not, not to, I know that, I hear Katie on the, I just, so many issues in the square involve enforcement. And I just think the police department has to have a voice in this. E, e, even if it's not a voice, it's an ear. They need to listen and, and be able to weigh in about sense. So I support Mr. Zulus and his recommendation to put a, a designate of the police department there.
Yeah, I mean, can I expand on that? I think we should keep in mind, you know, as former town administrator John Cronin likes to tell us and emails when we point committees. Employees of town used to staff committees rather than be voting members of committees and have to attend every single meeting. And, you know, in some cases might even be delegated as the person taking the minutes. So I think we want to free up some time. I, I look at Bill Ritchie alone. He's on multiple committees. And, you know, committees seem to be, should be more in the area of residents rather than town employees, town employees being on too many committees. So that's my primary concern, where this is a short-term committee that's going to wrap up its work by April. I think we could just name the seven people then, rather than having to say, you know, designate of somebody. Because I think if we're appointing it, we probably should have the person right up front rather than to be determined later as the designate of the chief of police or the designate of the town administrator. So you, you could take a couple, this approach lays out role rather than name of a person. Whereas we could also take the approach, which is often what we do, probably far more common, to just name a slate of candidates who might bring different backgrounds. And you might have someone who has law enforcement on it. But you're still got the police department of other, we have police on the Traffic Commission. These recommendations are going to be going to the Traffic Commission and to us. So that's the reason I raise those issues. Not, not so much as being opposed to having a police officer as a designate of the chief be on the committee. But we have police represented on the Traffic Commission and they definitely have to be involved. I agree with that. It's just a question of are they a voting member of this working group?
I, I would have to say, I'm, I'm also concerned about the number of committees that, that we have and that we're asking staff to be on. So I think giving it a little consideration is, is warranted. I do hear Richard saying that, that enforcement needs to be one of the, the things that's considered along with any recommendations. So maybe we can think about how that could happen without asking them to, you know, the, the chief or his, or her designate. At this point, his designate to, to show up to what could be a substantial number of meetings since this is before April 27, 2021. So, yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a question. I'm, I'm not as familiar with the East Milton Working Group that the Planning Board has instituted. And would some of this work be duplicative, right? My, my designate would probably be Allison Quinn from the Planning Department. A lot of what's going to take place in East Milton has to do with what's going on in the square from a development perspective. I'm just wondering what, what their role is and, and do they have something like this already?
Well, that's an excellent question. I, I've only spoken with Judy Barrett once or, or twice. And she didn't mention traffic, but that doesn't mean that they weren't, that, that, that's not something they're considering in their overlay. But I thought it was more geared towards land use because it was for the formation of a 40R district. But I think it's, it's a question we need to ask because they, they might have great information to help this group. Mr. Zulus, did you, were you going to say something?
No, I, well, I, I, you know, I think this has been a very fruitful discussion. I think the ads from Richard and Arthur are great and Katie. Maybe, maybe what we do is, is, you know, sharpen the pencil a little bit. You know, focus on some of the thoughts that Katie had, make the changes that Richard and Arthur suggested. And then come back next time with a revised, revised. next time with a revised revised proposal.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
So I I reiterate, Mr. Zulus' is, I want to move this. I I think what he's, ninety-nine percent of what he's put together, I I would want to see us act on. And with regard to Mr. Dennehy's thoughts, having sat on the 40R Committee, the East Milton, County of East Milton Group is very clearly defined on 40R only. And every time it starts to move either way, Judy moves it back to the mission ahead, which is looking at a 40R for East Milton.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so um I I think I hear that we're, we want to move this forward and we'll pick it up at the next meeting. Or are are, Richard, are you suggesting that we move it right now?
I'm happy to move it right now. I'm not sure where the where the rest of my colleagues are, but based on, I'm fine with uh ninety-nine percent, as I said, of Mr. Zulus' recommendation, and I will accept Arthur's. I think Arthur's points are good. And even though I hear Katie, the fact that this is going to end in April, I wanted to, I I'm more inclined to want to move this forward now. I'd actually make a motion to to, given the amendments made, to move it forward tonight.
I'll second.
Um, I'm just going to say, I'm just, I'm not going to support it because we don't have them in writing. We've had a few ideas put forward. And frankly, I'm not going to vote for this constituency as it is. I don't think the board should be appointing a committee and then leaving it up to two employees to delegate members. I think we need to sharpen our pencil a little bit on this. So the the majority may have a different view. I intend to vote no, because I don't think the current membership is the right membership.
And and I have to say, I I I'd like to, you know, I, we, I hit everyone with this proposal for the first time at this meeting. So I, so I'm, I'm sensitive to giving members the opportunity to give it some more thought and and to to actually redlining the changes that have been suggested tonight. And so we can all be comfortable with with what we're voting on. So I I'd actually prefer to 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 really make the changes, see how they look, and get the additional thoughts from Katie. And then, and then if we have different views, that's fine. But I, but I'd like to give people a little more time, frankly, to 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 tease out those few little issues, that one percent, Richard, tease out that one percent. So everybody's kind of on board going forward. That's, that's where I am.
Um, well, I
Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, Madam Chair, go ahead. So I'm just asking, only because we have a motion that's been seconded, are you asking me, Michael, to withdraw this motion for tonight?
Well, yeah, I I I, that's the way I'd like, I'd like to go because I'd just like to have, everyone have their, a real shot at thinking about it. And it sounds like a couple of the members want to get a little more information, want to think about a little more. And so I, so I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to that. So I, so I'm
I withdraw my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells.
I, I appreciate that, Richard, and and Dick Burke's raring to go. And once we, once we have this
What he is, he always is.
Right. And once we, once we have this fixed, it'll, it'll hit the ground running real fast.
So I withdraw that motion only if we have it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yes, well, that, 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 that's what I, I would suggest is that we have it on the next agenda. We should have it sewn up. I would appreciate a little more time to think about it. I I do like the idea of having actual people, you know, knowing, you know, who who would staff it. Dick Burke's great. And I I guess I had one other question, which was, I I'm just trying to understand how this group does its work. And I'm, I'm sure it's possible, but I I haven't had a lot of chance to think about how this work, this group does its work, when we're going to be seeing a lot of change. Granted, it's going to take quite a while to get the resignalization done and, you know, some of the improvements for pedestrians and things already in place. So would this group be working with that plan and then trying to make additional recommendations around that? I am just
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
So there really isn't a plan for the Wood Street Extension.
Right, I agree. I agree.
For that. There is plan for improved pedestrian safety, but I think, I think having fresh eyes look at that plan for pedestrian safety, maybe they can make suggestions for tweaking that and improving that. And then in parking, I don't think there is a plan for parking. And so to the extent that this group can can dig into that and see if there are any options for that, I think that, so that, so I, so I do think there's a role for this, for this group.
Yeah, I was not suggesting that there was a role, but that really explains that that they'll be looking at what's, what's going to go in place and then work with that. That was my only question. And I didn't want to make any assumptions. And I thought also residents might like to understand that, too.
Yeah, absolutely. You're absolutely right. Absolutely right.
Yes.
I think as a follow up to that point, then, there's an open question then is to, our board, several months ago, submitted the East Milton Wine and Spirits request to revisit the two hour parking to the Traffic Commission, which I just mentioned to Chase a short while ago. I think now there's a question, should this new committee, which is going to make recommendations to the Traffic Commission and our board, should they be weighing in on that? So this is, this is one of the concerns with multiple groups and committees looking at similar issues, but it's possible that maybe this group should look at that issue as well. But I I agree with what you were, I think where you were going with that, Melinda, that there's already a lot of change in the process in the square. And will the, will this committee, if it has to report by April, when the DECT project is not finished?
Right.
Maybe the time should be later than that, then.
Yeah, that, that, that was, that was sort of my corollary question, because they do intend to work with the new changes. And I I didn't know if, if that, that could really be done without more of it being completed, but it could be. I I don't know.
Yeah, if I may, I, we did get a lot of feedback on the Traffic Mitigation Committee about what was desired. And those, those things that are desired, Wood Street Extension, pedestrian, parking, those are not exclusive of what's being done in the square now. And so I, so I, so I, so I do think that that, that this work, you know, can begin now and take, take into consideration what's being done in the square. And, 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 and the, the idea, and I'm certainly not wedded to April, but the idea was to have a focused working group and not kind of an advisory committee, but a focused working group looking at tangible issues, specific tangible issues, rather than saying, well, go out for eighteen months and, you know, take a look and survey this. The idea was to get it focused. I'm not wedded to that, but I do think we, we do want to kind of keep this one a little bit more focused time wise.
Right. No, I, I appreciate the focus, especially with the number of committees we do have. And and the Talent Bank may have people who said they were interested in traffic. So that's another place to look for people. I believe I saw someone. Mr. Doyle, you're muted.
How's that?
Great.
Thank you. I just want to reinforce what Michael just said and add that in some respects, this is a natural successor to the East Milton Business and Citizens Advisory Committee that existed probably about five years ago. It's a little extended up. That's probably when it started. You're right, Richard. And I would recommend that report, which is available through the Planning Office, be background information for the men and women who ultimately serve as members of the committee. I think will be very helpful to them.
Okay. Arthur, if you could follow up with an email on that, because that's a group I'm not familiar with.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Predates all of us, Melinda.
The group that Arthur served on, right, that advised on the DECT project?
That's correct.
I think my father was on it.
Oh, wow. Okay. That certainly does predate us. Okay. So if we're ready, we'll move on to discussion. And I'm not, I don't know if we're ready to approve because we did say our, our goals and objectives. We did say at the last retreat that we thought we wanted to meet again in six weeks because a lot came out of, a lot, a lot came out of that. Basically, we only had time to go around once to everyone for, so that we could gather possible, and I mean, we might keep them all, but possible goals for the next, I, I think Katie put it well, kind of the next eighteen months, really. I, I, I don't think we were necessarily thinking the next year. It's a bit longer. So I'm, I'll open it up for discussion. I do want to note that we said that we would have another, another meeting or another retreat to follow up and sort of refine these a little bit. And that date would be October, I think, seventeenth, if I'm looking at at the correct week. So would anyone care to make a comment? Or I'm not sure if anyone has any questions, but, oh, I should tell you, the, the way I organized it, I just put the initials TA is for Mr. Dennehy, since he's, he's a sort of a special part of the team. And then other people's initials, who brought things up. And Richard wasn't able to join us. So we, we will be able to add his in. And so it is not complete, in my eyes, until, until we get his, his input. But would people like to make a comment or ask a question? I don't think this, this is the final organization. It was just for sort of clerical purposes that I organized it this way. No? Okay.
Are we confirmed for the seventeenth? Is that definite?
No, it's not. I just, I, I just thought I would remind people that we said that. And oh, actually, it might be the twenty-fourth, but we have our site walk that day. So our site walk for the Lyman Road, Paper Street. So we'd be looking somewhere towards the end of October.
I can do the seventeenth if it's the afternoon. I was just wondering if it's, if it's, I didn't remember that we had confirmed that, but
No, we hadn't, we hadn't. We just said we intended to meet in about six weeks. Mr. Zulus?
So I, so I think this is a great effort. I think you did a great job. I think, but I, but I think it makes sense to, to, you know, use this as kind of a guide and, and then tweak it at that subsequent meeting and get the input to get some further input and then finalize it. But I think this is, I think this is a great, great starting point, certainly, and really reflects what we had, what we discussed.
Great. Could people make it in the afternoon on the seventeenth? Or would you like to let, let Mr. Dennehy know? I mean, we have time to firm it up, so.
Yeah, I'd like to check the schedule, check the sports schedule for that day.
Okay, I know. That's why I'm concerned about, yeah.
Not, not professional kids.
Okay, great. So that's, that'll be our tentative date, and then we'll confirm that. If people could, could let Mr. Dennehy know whether it works or not, that would be great. And we'd be, I think we'd be looking in the afternoon again. That seemed to work okay for people unless Mr. Zulus, the sports schedule says otherwise, then we'll pick another date because
One to four, one to four is what we're looking at, right?
Yes, yes. Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Item fifteen, Select Board Finance Committee Membership. We, we actually had discussed whether Katie or I would, would stay on the Finance Committee. And, and at one point, I think we, we also talked about perhaps expanding, expanding it to three members then, though it may not really be a subcommittee. So, but we thought we'd have a chat about it. And does anyone have any thoughts about expanding the Finance Subcommittee?
Would, it would just mean that any meeting would be, have to be posted for both the committee and the full board, since it's a quorum of the board also. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that we should take that approach.
Right.
I, I'm less inclined to, to, to have a committee that constitutes a quorum of this board. You know, I'm not, I'm not really, that, yeah, I'm less inclined to do that.
Right. I think it could be very complicated. So, so that, that's, that's good. We agree. And that, so the next item, I think we're just, we're going to defer Mr. Zulus' appointment to the Select Board Finance Committee because we actually have minutes to, that we need to approve. That's probably some of the most pressing business, actually, at the moment, and those are important. So, so we will do that at the next meeting in October on the seventh. So, thank you.
Happy to be deferred.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I knew that you, I knew that you would be, be very cooperative. You always are. So, so thank you. And let's see. Now we're seventeen, so we have the Historical Commission. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we reappoint Ellen Ann Salone of 22 Morton Road, William Mullin of 36 Elliott Street, and Stephen O'Donnell of 65 Hillsview Road to the Historical Commission to serve through September thirtieth, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Yes. Eighteen, the In-Service Safety and Training Committee. You have a motion?
I will move to appoint Charlie Colligan, Dean Alexander, Jack Calabro, and Tom McCarthy, all of 629 Randolph Avenue, to the In-Service Train, In-Service Safety and Training Committee through September thirtieth, 2021. I think that's their professional address and not their home address.
It is. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Some people might be surprised if they would have learned that they all live together.
In the winter, they do.
Oh, that's a good point. Mr. Zulus, I think you said yes?
Yes, I did. Sorry.
No, no, quite right.
I'm having, I'm having too much fun, Madam Chair.
Fun is always appreciated. Ms. Collins, yes. And now Pilot Committee. I'll entertain motion.
I'll move to, to reappoint Michael Dennehy of 525 Canton Avenue, Jennifer Hine of 453 Elliott Street, Matthew Keswick of 76 Buckingham Road, and C. Robert Reitz of 222 Highland Street to the Payment in Lue and Tax, in Lue of Taxes Committee through September thirtieth, 2021.
Hey, we got one, Michael. I think we got, I didn't hear Katie.
She was
I was already appointed.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Richard.
I'm looking at a different version. Just the version I'm looking at is Katie's name.
Yeah, no, thank you. I went back and checked to make sure. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have reappointments for the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Chase Berkeley of 629 Randolph Avenue, Gerard Burke of 521 Center Street, and Michael Dennehy of 525 Canton Avenue, the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee through September thirtieth, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. And now reappointments for the Milton 350th Anniversary Committee. I will entertain a motion.
I will move that we reappoint Hyacinth Critchlow, 70 Meadowview Road, Kevin Donahue, 17 Meeting House Lane, Kathy Fagan, 78 Cape Town Street, Mary McLaughlin, 3 Herrick Drive, Emma Jean Moulton, 435 Elliott Street, Elizabeth Neville, 6 Cliff Road, and Linda Lee Sheridan, 57 Clifton Road, to the Milton 350th, 350th, the Anniversary Committee to serve through September 30th, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, some viewers may wonder why we're reappointing this committee. I think we should just note that there are a few minor things, such as the clock, that's targeted to go to East Milton Square once the DECT project is done, that this committee is still, has within their jurisdiction. So, and a few smaller things like that that I'm forgetting now, and others may remember, but that's why so many years later, we're still keeping this committee in existence.
Do we want to rename it the 375th Anniversary?
Go for it, yeah.
Get him started on that. They can get started on it.
We had this discussion.
Well, we're very...
Call Linda Lee and tell her that, Mr. Zulis.
Well, I think we're very lucky that they're willing to stay on and finishing, you know, discharging all the last pieces of their responsibilities. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes, with a thank you to all of them.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Absolutely.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Collins, yes. And yes, a big thank you from all of us. Still remember all the things I participated in, so thank you. So I think we are deferring the November election warrant, or is that, at one point, I saw Susan Galvin was on the line, but we didn't receive a copy of the warrant, so...
Madam Chair, if we could defer that, yes. We, the clerk is working through that. We believe that the CPA article will be question three, but they haven't received full confirmation of what the warrant, election warrant is going to look like at this time.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Let's see. Here we are. Number 12, Discussion Adoption of Town Website as the Official Posting Location for Meeting Notices Pursuant to Open Meeting Law, 940 CMR, 29031C. So these are really our Commonwealth's Regulations through agencies. And I think we, do we have Mr. Frytag back? We do have Mr. Frytag with us, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through all the material. We had, in addition to a memo from him, a notice of adoption of the town's website that actually would need to be posted at Town Hall, and then also the clerk's notification to the AG's office. So, Mr. Frytag, would you like to give us some background?
Yes, thank you, and good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. So what you have here is a pretty straightforward process that's allowed pursuant to some regulations that have been promulgated by the Attorney General's Office. And it allows for town to move away from sort of the standard default posting method for public meetings, which would be typically in the municipal building in which the clerk's office is located, you are to post meeting notices in an area where they're viewable by the public 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so what that basically means is that we have one entrance to Milton that is a handicap accessible entrance to Milton Town Hall that, quite frankly, is filled with meeting notices for all the public bodies on a regular basis, and it's not really the most, always the most practical or reasonable type of situation to handle, just because of basic restraints on space. So the town can, through a majority vote of this board, adopt the municipal website, its municipal website, as the official posting method for meeting notices. Many other towns have done this. There are, you know, certain drawbacks that can occur when the website is inaccessible, which unfortunately has happened at least once in the past year. There are certain repercussions. If the website isn't able to be sort of restarted and made accessible within a certain period of time, that might result in certain public meetings having to be canceled and rescheduled. But for the most part, it does allow for, I would suggest, a sort of more straightforward and perhaps easier method of posting notice for public meetings. So I've tried to set that forth in the memo that I sent to you. Once the board, if the board decides to go for this, with this option, and adopt the website as the official posting method, it does need to have a certain notice posted at Town Hall that indicates that such a vote has been taken, and also directs people on how to visit the town's website and access upcoming, or notices for upcoming meetings. So I've also drafted that, and that would be, you know, that would be posted in probably one of the doorways or a number of the doorways at Town Hall, just to put everyone who visits Town Hall on notice. There's not much more to it than that. The AG's office needs to be put on notice of the vote. I drafted a letter that will accomplish that, that will be sent out by the clerk's office, and I followed up with the AG's office earlier this week and just confirmed that we were checking all the boxes, so to speak, on this process, and it appears that we have. They even said that they don't need the letter to be mailed to them. It's something that could just be emailed to them, and then they'll keep it on file. And I guess the last piece I would suggest is that if in the future Milton decided that it wanted to go back to posting physical notices at Town Hall, it could do that. It would just have to go back to the AG's office, provide some additional notice, presumably pursuant to another vote of this board, to move back to physical notices, and then it could go back to the way that it is right now. So that's the process in general. I'm happy to answer any questions any of the board members may have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? So, Mr. Frytag, I think I understand a couple of things. So that notice that goes up, say, at the main entrance and at the handicap entrance, that's a permanent notice that will, that always needs to remain? That's correct, okay. And that if the website does go down, and it's for a period of six hours or more, I think, if we do do something like keep up an electric signboard or something, that does not qualify as sufficient official notice if the website goes down?
That's right. It doesn't, it doesn't sort of cure any problems with the website, in other words. So if the website does go down, and you've already adopted it as your official posting method, you have to sort of live with that, regardless of whether or not you're posting additional notice at Town Hall. You certainly can post additional notice at Town Hall, and it might be very helpful to the folks that visit to see it there. And I know that in the past, there has been a screen that has been, used at Town Hall to show meeting notices. That's certainly all still doable and acceptable, but it doesn't replace, and it won't replace any issues that may occur with the town's website if this board adopts the website as its official posting method.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Zulis?
I have two questions. Is it, and she's not here, but I'm wondering if it's fair to say that if we did this, it would make the clerk's job easier?
Mr. Dennehy?
That is correct. Yeah, if you've been by Town Hall recently, Mike, it's a lot of paper going up and down. Some of the meetings are actually posted for October already because they just want to make sure that those meetings don't flip through the cracks. Others are posted, can't be posted in advance because there's too many papers on the window, and they're afraid that those may fall through the cracks. So we've talked with the clerk about this, and she is in favor.
So, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that point, Mike Dennehy, the clerk's office still is required to keep copies of all of the notices, but it won't be required to sort of try to figure out how to post all these things on the space that is available there.
So, given the fact that this will make the job of our overworked, underpaid, and expert clerk even just a little bit easier, if the members are comfortable voting tonight, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Please do.
So I'll move to adopt the town website as the official posting location for meeting notices pursuant to open meeting law, 940 Code of Massachusetts Regulations, 29.03, Subpart 1, Subpart C.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Excellent. Thank you very much. And our next item, we're going to 13, the Notice of Violation to Milton Yacht Club. And I think there have been some developments today that Mr. Frytag and Mr. Dennehy can let us know about.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can just say that today I was able to have a discussion with the town administrator about this matter. He's actually, if you look at the special act that Milton passed, it created the town administrator position in the town of Milton, he has jurisdiction, among other things, over rental property for the town. So this matter of sort of following up with the lease with Milton Landing is really something that the town administrator can handle on his own without having to continue to bring it back to the Select Board, notwithstanding that the town administrator and I today have been working on a letter to the yacht club, and we're just in the process of putting, you know, some finishing touches on that. So it's not quite ready to go out, but it will be very soon.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments, anything to add? Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me. So we're going to go back to item 22. That is acceptance of grants to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And we're very, very fortunate, as we were talking about earlier, to have so many generous people making sure that this very important issue is addressed in our town. Milton is a caring community, as Laurie Stillman, who is the director of the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, likes to say. And so we have a number of donations, and I would like to entertain a motion if someone would.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we accept grants in the amount of $50 from Kevin Senna and Diana Serino, $75 from Christopher and Stephanie Gray, and $100 from Kathleen Barniac and Stephen Robichaud to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, all in memory of Milton resident Julian Scotch.
I'll second.
I was muted. I was trying to say I'll second that.
Well, thank you, and I think I'll speak for the board when I express again my gratitude and also extend sympathies for Ms. Scott's family and friends. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. So approval of meeting minutes, I think we're deferring, we'll defer August 18th because we have a few changes that we'd like to make to those. And then we received an updated set of meeting minutes from September 16th. Has everyone had a chance to review those, and are we ready to vote on those?
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
That's okay. Let's offer that. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Okay, great. So our future meeting dates, so far, are the 7th, and then our regular meeting is on the 21st, and we have a tentative retreat on October 17th. So, does anyone, are those dates, do those dates still work for people?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We're on to the town administrators' report, the keynote license application filed by 7/11 at 590 Randolph Avenue. Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, September 21st, I received a letter from the Massachusetts Lottery Commission, directed, addressed to the Select Board, Milton Select Board. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 10, Section 27A, the town is notified, Select Board is notified, that an application for a keynote license has been received by the Mass. State Lottery Commission. We received two of these notes. One was for the 7/11 at 590 Randolph Avenue. The other was for the 7/11 at 98 Houston Ave. If this board will recall back in 2018, when both of those establishments, franchises changed from Tedeschi's to 7/11, a similar request was made. I called the lottery for a little more information on this. The letter follows that any action as a result of an official action taken by the city of town regarding the keynote applicant, we need to give the applicant an opportunity to appear before the licensing authority, in this case, the Milton Select Board, to discuss the issue at a local level. In essence, there are seven establishments in Milton that have lottery machines. Six of those seven have what's called keynote on the go. These two locations are looking for basically a in-house keynote location with a television where people can sit and watch the drawing of this. There are currently, none of those in Milton, as I said, and there was an application for these two addresses when they changed over to 7/11 two years ago. I would suggest that letters be written to these business owners, certified mail and delivered, asking them to appear at the October 7th Select Board meeting. The letter states that it must claim its right to a hearing within 21 days of receipt of this notice, which myself and the representative from the Mass. State Lottery Commission deemed to be Monday, September 21st, although the letters were dated the 15th. We received them on Monday, so I would suggest that two letters go out. We can draft those tomorrow, asking for the applicants to appear remotely at the next Select Board meeting so we can hear their request for this in-service keynote, if you will. I'm sure I'm not calling it by the right terms, but for those of you that can imagine that currently you can play keynote and grab a ticket and go, but you can't watch the drawings. This would be an application for each location, for the ability to show the drawings, and people can watch them live. I'll entertain any questions.
Well, I think that makes the 12th of October the 21st day, then, based on the 21st, if we're using the 21st, so that would give us sufficient time.
Correct.
Tom, share?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
So with the second location as well, I get the first one. With the second location, is it both 7/11s in Milton?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Mr. Zulis?
I just want to make sure I understand the procedure. So we're going to invite them into the meeting on the 7th, and at that time, decide whether we object to the issuances of the licenses and claim a right to a hearing before the Lottery Commission. Is that...
Correct.
Okay. And we have until the 12th of October to file that objection with the Lottery Commission.
Yes, and we did have, both myself and town council reviewed the letter. The similar letter we received two years ago didn't ask that this board ask the applicant to come in and testify. I don't know if this is, if this is an amended Mass. General Law, but this time around, they are asking that the licensing authority hear from the applicants.
Yes, Ms. Conlon?
I think we're going to want to hear from the public as well. So to the extent that we can notify not only the applicant, but also the public that there will be a hearing on this. I don't know if we need to notify, put it in the newspaper. We're under a shortened timeframe here, so I don't know if the regular public hearing rules apply, but we should at least make it known to the public that we're going to be discussing this. We've already rejected an application for one of these locations.
I was going to ask if we could possibly get it in, in the newspaper. I mean...
If I may, if I may just clarify, and we can certainly get an add-in, the second to last paragraph of the letter to us says, and I'll catch the end of the sentence, "Before the licensing authority discussed the issue at the local level in an open hearing or meeting prior to the hearing." So I don't think we would have enough time for a public hearing because we would need two advertisements in the Milton Times. So I think we make it part of our October 7th agenda as a public, public meeting item.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Wells?
So, Mr. Dennehy, if we, I recall our denial, I think this was when it was Katie, David, and I, is there an appeal process for the applicant? In other words, can we be overruled by the Lottery Commission?
There was not last time. Your, your decision was the decision last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, and, and I think Kevin, Town Council, if you want to weigh in, you are the, you are the licensing agent for the town, so I would assume that you supersede. I'm not sure if the Mass. Lottery can put stuff in your town that you don't want.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add two points regarding the, the public hearing notice. Mike Dennehy is absolutely right. The letter that we got from the Lottery Commission says, "Hearing or meeting," but it doesn't say anything about any requirement in the statute that references, say anything about a requirement that the, that notice be given a certain time in advance of that public hearing. I think all that is meant by that is that the applicant must be allowed to speak at the hearing. If Milton wanted to put something in the paper to advertise that there would be a public hearing on this matter at its next meeting, it could certainly do so. This isn't like, you know, some sections of, for instance, like some zoning regulations, bylaws that might require two weeks' notice in the paper. That's not this. This, this is just a, I believe there's just a requirement there that the applicant be allowed to speak. If the board would like to entertain comment from the public, it certainly could do that as, as it always can, but it is not required to under, at least according to the letter that we've seen. And the second, the piece, just follow up on what Mr. Wells just suggested, is that the, the letter seems to suggest that the town is really sort of perfecting its right to object to the issuance of this license by the Lottery Commission. So unless it provides this process where it hears from the applicant, it has no, the town would have no standing to object to the issuance of the license by the Lottery Commission. So if the town has, if there's any possibility that the town may object to the issuance of this license, then it must hold this hearing slash meeting at which it gives the applicant the ability to appear and be heard.
Yes, Mr. Zulis?
But it does seem from the notice in the Lottery Commission, if, if we're going to object to this after that meeting, the public meeting in which the, the proposed licensees have a right to appear, then we're, we get a right to a hearing before the Lottery Commission. So it suggests that they still have some decision to make.
Well, oh, sorry, Mr. Freitag, go ahead.
I would just say I think that that's the right read. I think that this is a little different than the last time around. It seems to me that in this case, it is the Lottery Commission that makes the decision. The letter seems to refer to the, the Select Board in this instance as sort of the typical licensing authority, but I think that that's somewhat misleading. I don't think that, that the Select Board is the one that's going to issue the license in this case. It seems like it's that, that authority lays with, or lies with the Lottery Commission itself, and so you have to sort of perfect this process for, you know, will allow you to object in order to have, you know, any audience with the Lottery Commission on these licenses.
Right. I, I mean, it's clear that they're, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Conlon, yes?
No, go ahead, Linda.
Oh, it seems clear they're going to have a hearing, and they're, they'll be deciding this, because they, and then they direct us, I find it curious that they say, "To address your written objection." I guess no one ever forwards, "Yes, let's do this," an agreement. I don't know. So, so yes, I think that's how I read it, that they, they would definitely have a hearing one way or the other, and we had a certain amount of time to get an objection. And, Ms. Conlon?
Yeah, I think it's the same process as previously, but we have been advised before that if, if the community objects, then the lot, it's, the lottery is unlikely to issue the license. So we, we did file objection letters the last, not only with 7-Eleven, but also with Milton Food Mart, and we were never notified of a hearing before the Lottery Commission. So it was just not, it was either denied outright by the lottery, or maybe, I don't know if it was in writing or how they handled it, but, but we weren't notified of a hearing to appear at and make our objection known. We just put our objection on record, and then the lottery handled it, I think, on paper. So they, they may have changed their practices, but in terms of how they're going to handle it now, maybe they are going to have hearings. Maybe they are doing that now, but didn't seem that they were doing that previously.
They've capitalized hearing in the letter, which suggests that it may be defined in the statute what that, what that consists of.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. All right, well, we, we will visit this on October 7th.
Two more, two more items, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy, please.
Yes, I had a brief conversation with Rabbi Benjamin. As you probably recall, this board and the Board of Health signed off on a wonderful event that took place on Town Green on Sunday. Rabbi was, was very pleased with the service of the Shofar service, Shofar service which took place on Sunday. So just want to let this board know that everything went off without a hitch. It was a wonderful day and celebration. And lastly, it slipped my mind, I forget what I was going to say. It was, oh, the report that Caroline had talked about, that, the Wednesday report that the state generates on behalf of the communities and what their color status is for COVID. I don't want to steal her thunder, but they refreshed that about a half an hour ago, and Milton is still a green community. So kudos to Caroline and her staff for all the outreach and, and work that they've been doing to continue to keep Milton one of the safest communities in Massachusetts with respect to COVID. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't really have a report, but I, I think I'd also like to thank all of our residents and our staff, and anyone who visits, because that we're, we're all working to, to try to keep people healthy, and I really appreciate it. I don't have anything additional. Do members have reports, Ms. Conlon?
I have no report.
Doyle?
I'll just add, Madam Chair, that the Master Plan Implementation Committee met earlier this week, and in addition to its organizational business, which included appointing me to the Housing Committee, it spent the vast majority of its time discussing the town's center planning and the results of a survey and packing that members of the Planning Committee had done, and Mike's probably familiar with this work. It also looked at ways in which the Implementation Committee will manage the implementation goals that were previously identified, collapsing them into common areas, for example, and then reassigning individuals to work in relation to those. For example, I would be coming to the Select Board with those goals that related to the Select Board for your identification of priorities and re-understanding of what those goals for the Select Board were. And that's it, Madam Chair, and other members of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, do you have a report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items. First, I want to, I want to thank Jeannie Schmidt and the Falcone Company, who at the behest of resident Michelle Surpa, whose daughter Hannah, at age four, fought quite a heroic battle against cancer in the past year. This is, I think, the third Children's Hospital blood drive that they're sponsored here in town on Saturday. And they had a packed, a, a packed agenda. I was happy to have my arm pricked for a 30-minute donation, once again, but they did a magnificent job. They're coming back on this Thursday. I would say that, sign up, but it'd be, all 26 spots are already filled, and as many of you may know, we are in dire straits for blood donations in this section of the country right now, especially in, in the COVID-19 crisis. And I just want to thank Jeannie and all the members of the Falcone family who helped out the Surpas in putting this on both last Saturday and this Thursday coming. And secondly, as the Deputy Director, Chase Berkeley, alluded to tonight, just a bit of sad news. If you grew up in this town, and you lived here in the 70s and into the 80s, anyone who knew anything about the town, especially from our landfill operations when we ran a dump, you would have known, recognized the name CB Bosworth Company. CB Bosworth and his, which was Charles Senior and his brother A. Bosworth, which was, got his first name, slips me for a minute, and I'm looking at his face, I can't see him. They, they were very prominent construction companies here in Milton during this, maybe even into the 60s before I can remember, but through the 70s and 80s. Bosworth handled all of our trash collection for decades and ran our landfill until it was closed in the 19, late 1980s. This was passed on from Charles Senior to his son Charlie, who was just a tremendous asset to this town for so many years. As Chase mentioned tonight, he was our head mechanic, ran central maintenance for a short period of time a few years ago. Sadly, Charlie went in for a medical procedure on Monday and, and died. If you just barely, one memento story that I, that I told just Monday in an interview about the Blizzard of '78 was, it was early on in the first night, it was before I was a policeman, I was a medic at Fallon then, and it was the first night that the Blizzard hit, hit, you know, our region, the town, and Milton Hill was completely gridlocked. There were buses with people completely stranded on both sides, cars, and the town really had nothing that could move it or clear it, and I don't even know how I was up there. I can't remember exactly, I just remember how cold and wet it was, but the police and fire, and so many people stranded there, and in the midst of it, up Milton Hill from East Milton came this huge front-end loader being driven by Charlie Bosworth. And he cleared that hill that night, and it was like the cavalry coming. And as I told the story on Monday, not knowing that he would die tomorrow, I could still see that big smile on his face when he got on the machine that night, but he was a great member of this community, and his, his loss will be sadly missed. He really contributed to his family for so many decades, like so many other families that, you know, are prominent, we remember, but when we pass in this life, we always want to try and take that moment to seize on, and I, I thank you for allowing me to, to mention his name tonight, is just his whole family, and just him especially, just a, a great asset to this community for so many years, and following the generation of that, in this, in the legacy that his father started, probably going back into the 50s, to say that's before my time, but I thank you for allowing me to mention him tonight in his passing.
No, Richard, I, we thank you. I, I really appreciate it, and, and we're lucky that, that you know so many people, and you have such a deep history with so many people. And normally, we would do this in the beginning of a meeting, but, but I'd like us to just take a moment to, to think about Mr. Bosworth and send out some thoughts of gratitude and, and comfort for his family and friends.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulis, do you have a report?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We had no public comment, and future agenda items, I think we've done a pretty good job of collecting along the way, but just in case someone has one, speak now. Okay. Always forward things to, to Mr. Dennehy as well. And let's see. So at this point, I move pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subpart A, Subpart 1, sometimes called Purpose 1, that the Select Board enter into executive session to discuss a complaint brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, specifically an open meeting law complaint made by Dr. Cindy Christensen against the Select Board and the Select Board's response to the complaint, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you very much, and good night.